To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, we're going to have our open public forum. If there's anyone that would like to say anything, you have two minutes.
Did you want to talk?
Is that where you bring in business?
Well, you're not on the agenda, so you can talk now.
Okay.
Just come up here. Yep, yep.
I'm Mike Henderson. I live on 28454 South Brown Street, behind the Good Samaritan Center. Yeah. So I have storm sewer charges, I mean, we all do, but I don't actually have a storm sewer on that gravel road. The water actually flows down about, well, my two neighbors' houses actually flow into my yard, and that gets into my tile on my house, and my sump pump actually pumps over and over and over. And I actually occur and occur hundreds of dollars of charges running that pump every month, month after month after month. I mean, it's probably over $1,000 in the last two years since I've owned my house. And it's kind of excessive, being that I'm also charged for a storm sewer that doesn't exist. So, you know, I'd like to either have that removed from my bill or, you know, have a storm sewer put in, so I don't have to pay these charges to run my sump pump over and over and over.
Jenny, you know anything?
He talked and called me and talked to me about it about a month ago, and I did talk to Gordy about it. And Gordy said that water, because everybody on Brown Street is charged storm sewer, and it runs, you know how the water runs.
Some, excuse me, some of it goes to the north, some goes to the south by the estates. There's a tower that goes underneath each Brown Street that goes down to the nurses home in Lunenstown. So eventually, somewhat, it gets away. And if he's talking about having a storm sewer, then we got to back top that street, and you would be assessed back top press curb and got a press storm sewer, so.
I mean, that's still going to be cheaper than spending $600 a year.
Probably not.
Well, either way, I'd rather do it that than spend that much running a sump pump. It doesn't make sense. And I actually have videos of it going down the road and into my yard, and getting up to six and a half inches of water in my yard. And this happens more than once every year.
Okay, well, we're not going to be able to decide anything tonight.
Yep, no, I'm just bringing-
What I'm saying is I don't want to just drop it and say, "Oh, yeah, well, too bad." That's how we're looking at it. What I'd like to do is meet with the street department, have them take a look at it, look at some different options. I'm not sure what the code says, if that's a charge we can drop from that or not, or if that's something, you know, everybody has to be paid.
Well, I, you know-
But to get into it more and have a meeting with you.
Okay.
Is that, isn't that part of the sewer fee for the water sewer?
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer has a charge that's on there?
Yep.
And how much is the charge?
$6.75 a month.
Okay.
Per parcel, or per-
Per parcel, and you have just the one lot, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's any way to put any control or anything along that road, does that some of that?
Well, he's going to have to come from his house and add fill, so he don't get any water coming back, so.
Which house is this, Gordy?
Lori Henderson's.
Okay, right on the end, almost by Lonnie's.
Yep, next to Lonnie, yep.
We can have a street committee meeting.
So their storm sewer is a drain tile?
We're not going to, um-
Their storm sewer is a drain tile?
There's no drain tile in that street right now. Everything's got to lump down to the lower tracks.
Right.
Otherwise, it's got to lump down to the salt by Lonnie's, if you see the covered underneath the street.
But that is in city limits, correct?
Yes, he's in city limits now.
Do you have a phone number we can reach you at?
I do, yep.
I was going to say, why don't you go down with Jenny?
Okay.
And then we'll call that meeting and then-
Yep, we'll have a street committee meeting, and I'll let you know.
Okay, should I email you the video or the videos or bring them?
Yeah, do that, yeah, do that.
Yeah, I don't have a card.
Yeah, because then the committee can see what you're looking at. I'm wondering if they tiled, don't they fix it? But they charge it for a storm sewer.
All right, I'll send you an email, and then you can send them back to me.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Exactly.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak yet? If not, we're going to approve of the agenda, so I'll start with Julie. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, Pete?
No.
Lyle?
No.
Don?
No, sir.
No, Mr. Mayor.
And I do want to add something. I'm going to put Tammy Martin, school superintendent, for new business. I believe it'd be Jay, but we're going to try to get you moved up a little bit. And Jenny, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Does everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes and also the claims for the month? Yeah, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Somebody ask questions? Pete made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. Public curators, we have none. New business, the electrical rate.
That's you, Dave. You're top of the list.
All right, I'll try to be as brief as possible, but no promises made.
Yeah, we changed it, two minutes.
Two minutes? My recommendation is at the back, there's. Will play, sir, will play.
So, you know, I was here, I don't know, a couple of months ago to give some preliminary results. And what I'd like to quickly, presumably all have a copy of the report. So I just want to revisit two things that I mentioned. In Section 2, basically, it's looking at the need for additional revenues. And then the good news is, is that looking at the tables on Page 4 and Page 5 in Section 2 of the report, that you do not need any additional overall revenues for the electric department at this time through a general rate increase across all customers. So the general level of your revenues will, should suffice you right now for the next five years, based on the current projections. The next thing that we talked about the last time I was here is in Section 3, which is the cost of service analysis. And there's two things that are kind of important when we're looking at rates. One is how much revenue you're collecting, and then the other is who you're collecting it from. And in cost of service, what we're doing is looking at basically what we call the allocated cost to serve each different group of customers compared to the amount of revenue that is being received from those customers. And sort of in a nutshell within the cost of service is that the demand or the larger customers, what you call demand customers, are essentially subsidizing the residential and commercial customers. So in other words, the demand customers are paying a little more than they should, and then the residential and commercial customers are paying a little bit less than they should. So I've taken kind of those two things into account relative to the recommendation that I've come up with, which is that overall, you don't increase revenues, but that you increase the revenues from the residential and commercial customers while also then slightly decreasing the revenues from the demand customers. And then I'm going to get into some specifics on, relative to rate design, how I'm suggesting that you would do that as well. But that's, so you don't need overall revenues, but we should, you know, based on cost of service, you should be getting a little more from residential and commercial and a little less from the demand customers. The other thing, then more specifically with regard to rate design, is how you're collecting dollars from your customers. Now, the residential and the commercial customers have the same rate. And you're a bit unusual in that you have no fixed monthly customer charge for those customers. There are very few utilities left in the United States that have no customer charge for small residential and commercial types of customers. So relative to collecting some additional revenue from those customers, what I'm suggesting is that you add a customer charge component to the rate, not change the energy rate, the per kilowatt hour rate for those customers, but add, and I give you three different options of sort of phasing it in, but adding a customer charge for those customers. And based on the cost of service analysis, that customer charge for the residential customers could be as high as $10, and actually could be $20 for the commercial customers. What I'm suggesting is a $6 customer charge for those customers, which actually, based on the 100 utilities I've worked for, you're still at the low end of a fixed monthly customer charge. Within the state of Minnesota amongst municipal utilities, they probably range from $5 to $20. You're the only one I've encountered in Minnesota in quite some time whose customer charge is zero. So it's, like I said, it's a bit unusual.
What's the reason for having it?
Because even if a customer uses no energy, there's a cost associated with having them on the system. For instance, you have to install a meter, whether they use energy or not. You have to install that service drop that goes from the transformer to the house. You have to install a transformer. You have to read the meter, you have to generate a bill. So there are a lot of sort of fixed customer-related costs that you have even if a customer uses little or no energy. So there are fixed costs associated with having a customer just be attached to the system, whether they're using 1 kilowatt hour or 5,000 kilowatt hours.
And we have them for water and sewer also, the base charge. It's considerably higher than $5, but-
So that's, and this is, in my opinion, the best way for you to address also the cost of service would be to have an additional customer charge for those residential and commercial customers. Now, within the demand customers, they actually are billed a demand charge, which is basically their maximum hour take during the month, plus an energy charge. And the way that your rates are structured for those customers specifically, the demand charges are not as high as they should be, and then the energy charges are actually higher than they should be. So the rate design options that I've got for those customers is to raise the demand charge while lowering the energy charge, and then overall, it's a slightly lower bill for some of those customers. But there's something that we call load factor, which is kind of a, it's a ratio of the amount of energy that you have to the amount of demand that you use. And actually, you had requested, I do put a little bit of a dissertation in the report about load factor. High load factor customers basically more efficiently use the system. You put a lot of, there's a lot of fixed stuff out there, substations, transmission lines, transformers. All that is fixed, you know, the use of that or the cost of that doesn't vary based on energy. So people who use more energy per unit of demand are more efficiently using that system, and their overall cost is then lower based on the rate structure. So when you raise demand and lower energy, those better, more efficient customers will see a bigger break in their bill. And those that have a poor load factor, even though the class is seeing a reduction, some of them might actually see a slight increase. But based on cost of service, the demand charges really should be higher, and the energy charge is lower. The third thing from a rate design perspective is you have a power adjustment where you automatically change the rate, if you will, based on the cost of wholesale power. And that's a cost that's out of your control, and that's very common. Most utilities have some sort of a power adjustment. The thing is, your formula hasn't been adjusted in quite some time, so that you're collecting a lot of dollars from your customers through that adjustment, and not as much through sort of the published rate. Now, both components are your actual rate, but what I'm suggesting, and I think there's a table on Page 5 of the last section I'd like to walk you through, that shows how this worked when you change, and you have to change both the rate and the formula. And the rate change looks like it's a big increase, but it's actually not. And what I've done here is shown, tried to show this mathematically to help you. So Table 4-1 on Page 5 of Section 4, has everybody got that table? So if you looked at the first column, this is under your existing rate, your existing formula for the adjustment. If somebody uses, a residential customer uses 600 kilowatt hours, your published rate is 7.64 cents. Now, if the average wholesale cost is nine cents, you have a base in the formula where basically you subtract that, and you come up with the nine cents minus the 4.28, which is what's in the formula, leaves 4.72 cents per kilowatt hour. That is essentially added to the bill, so that the effective bill is $45.84, which is the rate, the 7.64 cents times the energy, plus $28.32, which is the adjustment, the 4.72 cents times the 600 kilowatt hours, for a total bill of $74. So what I'm suggesting is that, and it's very important that both of these changes be made, that the published rate actually be increased by four and a half cents, and the adjustment formula be changed so that its net is four and a half cents less. If you raise the rate and change the base, but it's critical that both of those things happen. Now what happens is, the rate is 12.14 cents, which is four and a half cents higher. But now because the base of that adjustment clause is also four and a half cents higher, the net adder, because of the adjustment, is actually then exactly four and a half cents lower. So now the bill is $72.84 due to the rate, but only a buck 32 due to the adjustment, for then a total again of 74.16. No bill will change because of that, but it's always better to have more of your rate in the actual rate and not have this sort of big adder charge, which oftentimes can be confusing to customers that kind of wonder, you know, what's in there, what's going on, what's this adjustment, I don't understand that.
Then it would fluctuate less every month, that would be nice.
And all of the rates that I have shown, and we'll talk about it in just a sec, include the assumption that you'll make this change in the adjustment formula. So they have to be made at the same time. Now, with regard to the rate changes, I've given you three options, all of which ultimately get you to a $6 per month customer charge for the residential and commercial, and also get you to an overall slightly lower rate as a group for the demand customers. And if you look at the end of Section 4, there are three exhibits, 4A, 4B, and 4C. So in 4A, you're making the jump in one step. And so if you look at the existing rate with no customer charge for the residential and commercial customers, then it goes to a $6 customer charge, and then the 12.14 cents. Now remember, that looks like an increase in the energy rate, but it's not, because it's a four and a half cent increase in the published rate, which goes hand in hand with a four and a half cent decrease in the effective adjustment adder. And then also you can see in the demand that the demand rate goes up, and it looks like the energy rate's going up, but that also with the four and a half cent differential, the effective energy rate is actually lower. So it's a higher demand with a lower energy. And then you can see that change in the base adjustment at the bottom of the table. So again, it's very important, a couple of things, that all of the rates in the proposed, whichever option you do, are all done, and that the change in the base on the adjustment is done at the same time. Otherwise, you'll either be collecting additional revenue or losing revenue, depending upon which way it goes if you don't do everything at the same time. Now, in Exhibit 4B, I've given you the option of doing it in two steps. You can see that the customer charge goes to $3 and then $6. Then what happens is the demand also phases in, in two steps. So again, here, the first step should be everything done all at the same time, and then the second step, everything done all at the same time. And the third option is a three-step option, which is basically the customer charge goes up $2 each time. So it goes to $2, then to $4, then to $6. And there are corresponding then changes to the demand rate, which are meant to be the same adjustment overall of, as the increases in the small customers for then phasing in the decreases for the demand customers. So one of the things, when you look at impact, like if you did the three-step option in 4C, on the first step, it's pretty easy. Everybody who's not a demand customer, their bill would go up by $2 a month, regardless of how much use, because the energy rate isn't changing. And they just have the additional $2 customer charge. And then if you did the second step, it'd be another $2, and the third step, it would be another $2. Questions on that, this portion of the rate design, before I talk a little bit about distributed generation?
Any more questions?
No.
And I'll leave it to your discretion on which way. You know, one of the things is that the fact that you don't need additional revenue is absolutely the best time to make these changes. Because for instance, let's say you also needed a rate increase. Well, now the residential and commercial customers would be seeing a slight increase because of the rate design change, and an additional increase because you needed more dollars in general. So when you have cost of service differentials that need to sort of be fixed, the absolute, well, the best, best time to do it is when you have a rate decrease, but nobody ever has those. But the second best time is when you don't need additional dollars. The other thing, and I'm, this doesn't really impact you yet, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to sort of belabor the issue, but I've got at the end of Section 4 a fairly lengthy discussion about distributed generation, and in particular rooftop solar that in a lot of places people are trying to put on their homes. There's a lot going on with regard to rates and net metering, where people can generate electricity and send it back out to the grid and get full retail credit for it. And particularly in the state of Minnesota, there was legislation a couple of years ago relative to consumer-owned utilities, municipals and co-ops, of being able to have an additional charge if you have distributed generation. That's a bit in flux, but they're starting to settle with allowing certain things. But in the legislation, it says that if you're going to do something, it requires that it be backed up by a cost of service study. If the point comes when you want to do something, if you start to see distributed generation coming into the community, you now have the numbers that you need. And at that point, I would be happy to have a conversation with you folks about what should be the appropriate numbers and how to apply them. Also, MMUA has been doing a lot of work in this area, and they've got actually a solar task force, that I'm actually part of that, working with them in order to make sure that the municipals are doing what they can do in, basically, while still following the law. And so it could be a fairly long discussion here, which is probably more appropriate at such a time that you might need that. And I'd be happy to come out for no additional charge at some point in the future if you needed to have a discussion relative to distributed generation. And maybe that's the best place for us to leave it at this point.
So why the chew on? Is there any comments?
Well, I think if we'd like to proceed with the requested rate adjustment, it's not really increase, you know, we had talked about publishing it in the paper, you know, before we pass a resolution, just to give people an opportunity to kind of see it, explain it, ask questions, and whatnot.
Which proposal are you talking about?
Well, I would think the three-phase would be the most.
That'd be over three years?
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
Well, our rates are high enough to make profit, our revenues are okay, and we're going to start charging fees. That's the plan?
Is it stop?
But we're not really, if I understand it right, we're not generating more revenue with that fee. We're just evening the playing field so that everybody's truly, more truly paying for what they're using.
Correct.
And the fixed costs are covered, if they don't use any electricity.
And the reason for that base fee? Again, some customers do not use it, and there are fixed costs that we have with it.
Well, every customer has fixed costs associated with being a customer on the system. I mean, every customer does. You charge the 20-some dollars for the demand customers in a customer charge, because they also have fixed charges associated with being, just being a customer on the system. I would wager that every bill you pay, other than your electric bill, has some sort of a fixed monthly customer charge. It's really the standard in virtually every industry from a utility perspective, because that's where the costs are.
Pete?
Well, no, he was just talking about, he said meter dropping in reading for the basic charges for fixed.
Well, there's, there are, there's sort of two aspects to that. There is a, I'll call it an equipment aspect.
Yep.
You have to set a transformer. There's a service drop aligned from the transformer to the house. You have to put in a meter install. You also, so that's, that's the infrastructure customer-related cost. There's also a customer service-related cost associated with billing, with meter reading, with providing customer service in general, you know, when people come in and have questions and so on and so forth. So there's really two aspects. There's an infrastructure aspect, which is customer-related. There's also a customer service aspect.
So if my bill is $180 this month?
It'll be $182 if you use the same energy the next time.
$182, and that's because the first step would be a $2 increase in the base fee?
Here we go from zero to two. It's not really, it's not really in the first step of the three phases, yes. And at $2, you'll still have the lowest customer charge in the state, I would wager.
I would say, because we lived in Rochester 20-some years ago, and I think our base rate was 15 something, it was-
I did, I did a little research on some of them around here from, and these are from 2010, but Hutch's was 650, Glencoe's was 9, Arlington's 5, Fairfax is 9, New Ulm is 9, Redwood's 520, Sleepy Eye is 6.
Maintenance service charges?
Yeah.
And a lot of them are up to 20 in the municipal world in the state.
Yeah, these are from 2010.
And some of the co-ops are as high as 60.
I understand.
How do our basic electrical rates compare within this area?
You said low.
Low.
I, that's what I was thinking.
Within the county, how are they?
Low.
I know I've heard that before.
Okay, Lyle, do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, I just, probably the time to raise it, like you said, but it's hard for me to raise something when we're already doing okay.
Yep.
You know, if we were the other way, I would be more inclined, but I don't know. It just seems to-
Well, remember, well, I think you need to keep in mind that you're slightly and very slightly increasing for one group of customers, but you're also lowering it for another group of customers, who you are, who you are, quite frankly, based on the analysis- another group of customers, who you are, who you are, quite frankly, based on the analysis, overcharging. So to not raise the one means then you're also not lowering, I think, you just have to weigh both halves. But you're the, you're the governing body, so you're free to do what you wanna do.
And what are you saying, you're charging somebody too much, and you're charging the other person not enough, so you have to kind of balance it out.
Yeah.
It's just the first step on a slope to another fee, that's all it is.
Well, can we do the adjustments without the fee being added?
Well, no, because you, that's, all right, you can't, if you, if you change the demand rate without adding the customer charge, then you're gonna lose revenue, because that's why I was, I said it's important to do everything, because the, that the additional customer charge is where you're getting the revenue, if you will, that you're making up for the reduced revenue for your bigger customers. Those things go hand in hand. In other words, if you only give the rate decrease part without the rate increase part, then you will be, you will lose revenue.
Is it reasonable to put the information out, you know, as Jenny said, put something in the paper, see what kind of reaction you get from people?
Well, to be fair, I've never, I've never had the public in favor of any kind of an increase. I, I mean...
It's just another wheelage tax, that's all it is.
We've done it before with the water and sewer rates.
Yeah.
Before, and we've never really had a problem with it, so...
I would rather have this discussion now, when, as you said, we don't need more revenue, than to be looking at it if we don't make any changes, and we have to do both at the same time.
I like, I like to say I got two or three phases yet to improve the system yet for on the ground, so I'm just probably looking at three hundred to five hundred thousand.
That will be needed.
Needed, yeah.
Finish the system.
In the next two years. So I'm just trying to...
You're saying we...
He just wants to lower anything.
More revenue is what you're looking for.
He's waiting for more revenue, yeah.
And that's to maintain the system.
Could we send it to the Electrical Committee?
That's what I wanna do. I was hoping that the Electrical Committee could take a look at it and make a recommendation. Who's on the Electrical Committee? Pete and, and yourself?
Pete and Julie? Sure, we can have another...
See what the benefits are gonna be, going with the one-step, two-step, or three-step?
Pain, that's all. I mean, do you want it six dollars across, or do you want two dollars? To me, you might as well go the full way. I know that's probably against what everybody's saying, but it's just another wheelage tax, you know, that's all it is.
Well, that's why I like the Electrical Committee, because even amongst the Electrical Committee, we've got one that thinks we should go the three-phase, the other right away.
I mean, we have a lot of people, elderly people, that probably are struggling to pay their light bill right now, and then we come out and say, well, we're gonna charge you more, and maybe some of the business and slash, but I don't know, I'm looking at...
Well, the least we would do is go the first increase, unless you just wanna leave it alone.
Alone.
That's kind of what I wanna do.
We're making money, we're putting money in the, making revenue, we're making money, we're putting money aside.
Just probably the time to do it and leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
I'm not an expert on this stuff at all.
I really don't wanna make a decision tonight. And, and the reason is, is that there's pros and cons for both of this. I think we need a little more information on it, I would like the Electrical Committee to get a little more involved and, and really dig in and see, is it something we should be doing? Take a look at our projections, where we're gonna be needing in the next five years. We're sitting really good, the fund is sitting really good right now. The other question I have is, why did we do this study? I mean, we have to ask ourselves that. We spent a lot of money on this study because we knew we needed to make some adjustments.
Because you did the study because you didn't know the health...
Where we're at?
Where we're at with the electrical.
And also remember, too, I mean, I think you're only focusing on the, the half of the bills that are increasing. This isn't a rate increase, you're not gonna get any more money with, with my recommendations. The bottom line will not change. I, I just think that's an important thing to, to focus on.
The rates would be more evenly distributed across the customer base.
Till the next, till the next time somebody decides to bump the fee.
Otherwise, next time we bump the, then we bump the usage up a lot more.
The rate up, just like buying a gallon of gas.
But then, if you only bump the, the usage rate up, what about the people who go south for the winter, and we still bill them?
And what about the people who buy efficient appliances and maintain an efficient lifestyle, and they get stuck for it?
But they still have the infrastructure, they're still billing.
Yeah, and it's in the bill. Like I said, when it comes to adding a fee, it's gotta stop. It's gotta stop.
I wanna make sure we're looking at this the right way. Now, you're, we're talking about, we're not gonna be making any more revenue, it's just gonna be shared differently.
Right now...
So when we talk about the demand customers, their rates would go down slightly?
Yeah.
And when we talk about demand, are we talking about industry, commercial, are we talking about anybody that creates a demand?
No, to, understand that every single customer you have puts a demand in the system. If you have a, there's a light out there, it turns on when it turns dark, it puts a demand in the system. So every, all electricity puts a demand in the system. When I say demand customers, that's your, that's how you define them, but they're people who are actually billed based on demand and energy, as opposed to energy only. 'Cause when you look at, let's go ahead and look at the rate, the existing rate in that first table in the back in Section, Exhibit 4A. So you notice that the residential rate is seven point six four cents. The demand energy rate is only five point three seven cents, it's two cents less, but they also pay a six-dollar demand. What happens in the residential class is, everybody has demand cost, okay? So everybody puts a demand on the system, it's just that you're collecting it, in residential, you're collecting it in the energy. That's why the energy charge, the seven point six four, is higher than the five point three seven, because the demand customers also pay a six-dollar per kilowatt demand charge. So their total bill has those two components, as opposed to it's just a single energy component. But everything that uses electricity puts a demand on the system. All demand is, is energy for a short period of time.
So air conditioners are running, that's demand.
There's a, and, so if you have a, if you have a three-kilowatt air conditioner running, it's putting three kilowatts of demand on the system. If it runs for two hours, it's three kilowatts of demand and six kilowatt-hours of energy. 'Cause all, all energy is, is demand over time.
So is there an incentive, if we change the rates for people to try not to have demand, or is the incentive then that...
Not really. One, very few customers even understand what demand is, okay? And certainly, your non-demand customers, how much demand they individually put on the system is irrelevant. For them, it's just how much energy they use, 'cause they're only billed based on energy. For your demand customers, sometimes larger customers, they understand load factor and demand, and they do certain things to control, to keep their demand down. They don't turn all of their machines on at once, okay? So that they can, they cannot have a maximum demand take during the month, they can control that to a certain extent. But your residential customers, they have no incentive to not turn everything on at once, because they're not billed that way, and they don't understand what that means.
I don't mind tabling things, but I do wanna table this till next, or next meeting, after the Electrical Committee has a chance to take a look at it and come back with a recommendation, and then have some more discussion at that time.
Would you like a motion of that effect?
I'll enter a motion for that.
And we'll retable it and send it to committee.
So motion made to table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, receive the vote, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us, all the same side? Or if you're curious? We've got some money tied into this, I wanna make sure we're making the right decision. Thanks.
All right. Any questions, Jenny, just give your...
I will, we know how to get hold of you very much.
Jenny, when was the last time we had a rate study?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, so it's been some time, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt? You're up right now? And then we're gonna get you after that.
Well, I think Ben's just here to mainly answer questions.
Okay, we're gonna hand it over to Don.
All right, this is in regards to the storm damage from the hailstorm back in July. There are many buildings that the city owns that were damaged, we need to talk about getting those buildings repaired. Unfortunately, in my opinion, and I believe Jenny shares this opinion...
I agree, yes.
...our insurance adjuster didn't give us a lot of information. Traditionally, most of us probably experienced with our homes, that our adjuster gave us a very detailed list about what was damaged and estimates thereof. We tried to get that from our adjuster, we were unsuccessful. All we were told is that it would easily, to repair everything, be over a hundred thousand dollars. The consequence of that is, if we just go off of that, we would automatically have to bid out everything. What we think is a better option is to pay somebody to go through everything and give us estimates. We believe that if we know all the estimates, we may be able to package out repairs, and that may make sense for the city, because we probably don't need to get everything done at once. So what we are recommending tonight is that the council approve hiring Schmidt Roofing to basically do what we believe the adjuster should have done in the first place, and give us the estimates. And then, after we see what makes sense for packaging, we, there'll likely be spaces that don't have to be bid out, and then we can work with local contractors to get our repairs done.
So what you're saying is, we get the estimates, and they would be approved by our insurance company, so we know that that is the amount we'd be getting for that work? Is, is that what we'd be looking at, or is this just an estimate, and then...
No, this is just an estimate. What we've been, what Jenny and I have been talking about is, once we know how we're going to do this, whether we're bidding, taking quotes, or just operating on an open market, is that our goal with whoever the city hires for what projects, is that they will be told that they have to work with the insurance company directly. We don't wanna do that, we want them to just work with them and get everything approved. But why we need the estimates beforehand is to make sure that we're operating, operating legally under the competitive bidding law.
And what is that?
Anything over...
So the amount is from zero to fifty thousand, the city can operate on the open market. Between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand, you can either get two quotes or bid it out. Often, cities just get the two quotes. And then, anything over a hundred thousand, you have to bid out. And right now, with the information, with the lack of information that we have, is we just have to bid everything out, which could probably result in delays for the city. We would just rather see what we're dealing with, because we know there's gonna be projects that can wait till next year.
And we would have to go with the lowest bidder, regardless of where they will sell.
But this, if I think, if we do this, I think it'll allow us to do like we do with the street projects, where we can actually tell the vendors, "Look, if you're in town to do another project, do it then, and we may be able to get a better bid price," right?
It's possible. To me, it's just from a project analysis, is that, to me, this isn't one lump sum project.
Right, it's a bunch.
But with the lack of information, we would have to...
It would be not to exceed the insurance-covered cost anyway.
Is there any way we can recoup the fee that we're gonna pay the contractor due to the estimates? Is there any way we can go back after insurance and get them to pay that?
It's unlikely.
Got it, okay. And is there any reason why they just don't wanna redo it?
I've asked him numerous times, and they're, they're busy for one, and it's just, I'm not impressed with the service.
Just was curious, so...
So if we're doing smaller packages, if we keep our local contractors doing their work instead of bidding, how do we...
Right.
That would be an effect, but we can't just directly circumnavigate the competitive bidding law. But so, that's, if we have more information, the city likely can justify seeing what actually needs to be done.
And Ben said that Schmitz would be willing to do that for us.
And we'll have a better idea of what exactly needs to be done, rather than saying it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's ten here and sixteen there.
You're gonna find that on a couple of buildings.
Right now, we're just being told, stuff is damaged.
And you don't know, you know it's damaged, but you don't know if you're getting all...
Right, we don't know.
Are they just looking at roofing siding, gutters, that kind of stuff, or are they looking at park equipment? I mean...
Are you looking at everything?
The way that I understand it is, we'll be, we'll be going around to each individual project, and we will, you know, document every single possible thing that we can, you know, that has justifiable damage. We will write an exact and made estimate for that and submit that forward for approval, is the way that I understand it.
But it probably won't be playground equipment.
Okay, I'm just curious, 'cause that's, you know, we talked about...
Right, yeah, I know, but they're roofing siding.
Yeah, you were talking about structures and build, yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
So if their report comes back, say, with an estimate of a hundred and thirty thousand, can we go to the insurance company and say there's, you know, reasonable evidence that this, that they should cover more?
They, the coverage really isn't the issue, it's the cost of the construction.
The issue is knowing what needs to be done.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll provide, you know, how I kind of envision it, with talking with Jenny, is that, I don't know how many there is, I think we talked maybe thirty, twenty-five, thirty, something like that. And what we'll do is, we'll provide photo documentation, photo packages, diagrams, and a, and a full-scale estimate for each individual, you know, entity, I guess you could say, and we'll provide that to the insurance company. And based on our findings, a lot of times, with the documentation that we provide, they will approve that estimate, because the exact and made is the bidding software that we use, and that is very standard, you know, for the insurance company, State Farm, American Family, all the, all the big insurance companies use that software, so it's not out of line. It's a fair market value price for the estimate.
And he's, he pretty much said it was covered, but we don't know how much it costs.
But the total is, right.
Yeah.
So here's how it would work, if, if you didn't wanna do what's being recommended, what you would need to do is bid it out. So then you put it out for bid, and then whoever got the bid would have to work directly with an insurance company to get whatever approved. Here, you have more information, and we avoid, we, at least we'll avoid probably bidding out everything all at once.
So we can do projects that need to be done now, now, next year, when maybe they're not so busy, we can go ahead and, and then those projects can be led?
Does the insurance give us a couple of years to work on that?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, we go ahead with the presented plan.
How do you charge for that? Is that by the hour?
Yeah, it'll be by the hour.
And what amount does that?
Oh, you know, a couple hundred bucks an hour.
Hey, Don, you should switch jobs. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Generally speaking, it's, our typical price for anything we do is typically thirty to thirty-five dollars.
Okay.
So Mike, I could, so you're gonna be talking to your adjuster and building by building, and take care of everything for the city?
Yes.
Super.
Not a tough construction. Right now, you're just giving us estimates, right?
But he's gonna talk to the adjuster, make sure we're the other same length.
Yeah, 'cause what'll happen is, any project that's under that fifty thousand dollar cap, we can award as a council.
Right.
Now, and keep in mind, this, this estimate, in my mind, isn't for the final, final round. This estimate is just to let us know how we can package projects.
Yeah, how we can proceed.
This isn't the final what we're gonna get. We'll get that once we figure out who we're hiring to do it, and they finalize with the insurance company. This is just to give us more information.
Any questions, are you?
I do have one question. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go around, we're gonna basically maximize profitability for the city on each individual entity that we're going to touch, which is going to be the way I understand it, every project that you have, correct? I guess my question would be, I, we have absolutely no problem doing that, and are willing to help in any way that we possibly can. I guess the way that I had assumed would, would be that we would be awarded some sort of work out of that package, is that a possibility?
Absolutely.
Or how would that take place?
The city cannot guarantee anything. This is just for, this is just for figuring out how the, like I said, without doing this, you need to bid it out, everything, right now. You cannot guarantee a person gets any work out of this. This is for informational, to figure out how to package everything out. To guarantee Schmitz Roofing, any projects out of this would be going against the...
Bad on my part, yeah.
This is for informational, to figure out how to package everything out. To guarantee Schmitz Roofing, any projects out of this would be going against the.
Bad on my part, yeah. But we want to keep it local. I think that is the thing, we would like to keep as much of this work local as possible and this would help us to maximize that.
Absolutely.
Have we have contacted some local?
We've contacted every contractor in town to see what kind of interest there is in this project.
Okay, I entertain a motion to have Schmidt contracting go out, or Schmidt Roofing go out.
Second.
Motion made, a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, thank you.
Tammy.
Would you drop Tammy out there?
The sidewalk, do we need that for town replacing now or is that for the program?
Yeah, that's for the program.
Us?
Are you here for?
The South Falls Club Board, the Park Board Committee.
Let me join the whole like.
And I'm hoping we can have a condensed.
Yep, I'm gonna zip through and I'll kinda tell you what, that's why I just ran off the PowerPoint for you to look at and I won't pull it all up. You can see on November seventh, GFW has got a bond proposal for building renovations and upgrades at all three of our sites. It's a two-option vote that will come out in November. The main option will be the, just over thirty-seven million. And then, the option two is over a million and that's an additional gym that will be added on. We've been kind of looking at what we need for building since 2013 when I came on, starting with the facilities. You can see, we looked at a variety of different things. The basic proposal for what we needed was sixteen point two. Taking care of about a short-term notice on the buildings would be twenty-six point eight million. The committee met, worked through things and that's our, our long-term solution is the forty million solution. On the second page where it says, project objectives, you can see we did look at our communities and how this would impact all three of our communities. The educational component as well as the physical components of all three of the buildings. So, those were always in the forefront of the task force mind as they went through that. The biggest thing would be at the elementary would now become a pre-gate, pre-K through grade two, adding our school-age childcare program. We needed space to make that happen and that, so doing that, three through six would go to Fairfax. We'd still have a lot of good community space at Fairfax then, right now. Kind of the same space that Fairfax has had available to them. We'd be moving seventh and eighth grade over to the high school, which would allow us to maximize our teachers' license, giving them the ability, our seventh and eighth graders then to have Spanish and A and industrial tech and access to our community music, our music and arts programs sooner for those things. So, that's kind of the gist of that. It included the premise of where that is, the renovations that we were looking at in order to do what we need to do at the high school is the largest renovation project. So, on the one page where it says GFW High School, I know you have pictures, I have color slides. If you want this presentation, I can send it to you. But you can see where the footprint is enlarged and taking that over, but it'll include better drop-off for safety for our students at the high school here in Winthrop. Keeping the high school in Winthrop is just a matter of viability for us. Your area being closest to the metro loop meant our greatest population of students. The medical center, we're hoping to possibly do some programming partnering with the medical center in Gaylord, so that means the high school needs to stay centered here also. So, we're very excited about this whole structure, the layout. It would just take that old building and kind of give it a very new, fresh look. Most of it would be new. We would keep the wing to the west and then the gym and then kind of encompass everything else around that. Continuing through are just kind of the floor plans. The A and all of the industrial arts would instead be facing the library or the, the park area, so on the north side, allowing then our airflow. Right now, we have airflow issues with our venting systems within our industrial tuck. So, that would all happen. You can see the impact for the basic taxpayer when it would all come out to play at a seventy-five thousand dollar home. The increase, if you took both options and added the extra gym, which would just square off that proposal, we would come a dollar higher than Buffalo Lake Hector right now. Bonds that are less than ours would be Sleepy Eye, Bold, and Glencoe Silver Lake. Otherwise, all the other area schools would continue to have higher tax bonds. You can see the project would start summer of 2018, went until probably December of 2020. Absentee ballot starts on the twenty-second, so we're partnering with Sibley County to offer our voting, everything that's happening with that. The fifth, even on Saturday, they'll be open for voting and we will have voting at each school from noon to eight on November seventh. In your packet, the next one is the, the bond layout. Some people have asked why we aren't offering a variety of options to see which one will go through. You can't do that as a school district. We have to have one option that is approved, that is sent to the Commissioner of Education. So, you can't send a variety, you have to have one final proposal. So, that is the proposal that's being sent. You can see the amount of money. Long-term facilities maintenance, we're gonna use some of our state funding and bond that early to offset the project by two million to try to keep the reduction in costs down. The last set of pages are just color prints. You can see a little bit better what the different layouts of the different buildings. Feel free to contact me. I know they came out a little blurry, but you can kind of see a better scope of that within that packet. In the very end, we're working on our frequently asked questions or any question, honestly, that's been brought to our attention, trying to find an answer and putting that up and having that on our website. So, any of you have any detailed questions? I'd love the opportunity to go through those, yes?
How many students do you have total at all three schools?
Right now, we are at just shy of eight hundred, so.
Why the extra gym?
Right, our, our gym, right now, we have is actually undersized. We're trying to figure out how to add, we have to replace the gym floor and the bleachers. So, we are adding a gym that is actually appropriately sized for a school of eight hundred or more students.
You have eight hundred students at all three schools?
Together, all three.
Trying to resize a gym here at the high school justified on those eight hundred students?
Just for our high school population, so.
Just for the high school population?
Correct.
Which is how many?
Right now, our high school population is just shy of two sixty.
Okay, and what's your plan to get those houses?
Right now, we are paying for appraisers and it would be all contingent based on this, giving them a fair market proposal.
But then I want to take the fair market value, what's your plan?
We're gonna start with step one on that and then have to see, yeah, yeah.
That's a, that's a pretty big question for somebody who's just remodeled a house.
Yeah, so.
Just curious.
Yep, no, we've got, we've, we've got that in the works, so we're just waiting for the response back to you. You're welcome.
What about the farmers out here? Did that, my understanding is that tax relief did go through?
It did go through. That was part of the reason we waited another year. We thought it was gonna go through last year.
I know it's over four years.
Yeah, it's a, it's up to a forty percent reduction based on, ours is just shy of thirty-three percent that our farmers will see tax relief.
Why is it only thirty-three?
Depends on the, the value of the land and the amount of people. And then, so then they kind of look at that overall expense around the state and then they determine the, the economic level of each. So, it's a formula that I'm not exactly sure of the, but I was happy to see that we were where we were on that, so.
And that thirty-three percent is made up by the state then?
Correct, that is using state revenues. So, it is not a tax shift on our local taxpayers.
I just wanted to clarify, I knew that.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Did the population of students go up this year or down? I know it's only the first day.
Yeah, it's only the first day. Well, and elementary technically doesn't start till tomorrow, so they continue to do something a little different. We're, we're pretty much right where we were last year at this time. So, we're, we're doing a nice hold, which I'm very happy for after having a decline to kind of see that hold. And what we're very excited about is, we had to add another preschool class last year. We have some room in those classes this year, but we've been having a great influx in our three and four-year-old populations.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, that's, I'm, I'm happy with any moment, so thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. The resolution that updated the full capacity, resolution twenty seventeen, there's thirteen.
This is just, well, this is just the.
This is setting the maximum like we did last year.
Yeah, is everybody familiar with that? We just, the amount is conservative. We'll have a work session to kind of go through all of that.
Can I bring my pencil again like last year?
You can.
Thank you.
And some of the things in here that are increases is, I put in for a third full-time officer. I budgeted twenty-five thousand. No.
I didn't think so.
We, I put in twenty-five thousand based on the park committee's recommendation for sidewalk replacements and adding not last year's portion of capital reserves, but putting back in the things we had cut last year. The ambulance, some of the things in Gordy's department that we.
The equipment replacement funds.
Yes, yes.
Speaking of that, we're gonna have a work session, but before the work session, I just wanted you to talk to all your carby heads and ask them to really take a look at the replacement equipment funds. Are they still legitimate? Do we still need to replace it? Are there other options we can be looking at? The things that we no longer need, that would be cheaper, we hired out? I mean, just to take a good look at that because, you know, we, we worked on these funds for many, many years and things change in time, so just want to take a look at that.
Also, can we look at, have the department's head talk to the other cities? And is this one of those things where we can share a piece of equipment between cities? So, one per, one, maybe one city provides storage, will the other ones get to use it? Some type of agreement on some oddball pieces of equipment?
We've worked with cities in the past.
I know we've done in the past, but.
We got the Judd Oakley's case.
Exactly, exactly.
That was nineteen eighty-seven. That's back a long ways.
The point being is.
But if there's options.
There's options.
You know what happens though?
Yeah.
Jenny has known this in the past. We work, we work with somebody and when it comes down to saying, okay, we're gonna share.
They don't wanna.
Just an idea. Or not sharing.
Okay.
And I know the fire department does regularly review theirs.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there before we have a work session. We want to set a date for that work session.
When do you want to have the work session?
Tomorrow.
We usually have it in November. Monday's work good.
As long as they ain't during deer season.
Yeah.
No, we have to have it by December, right?
The truth in taxation is in December, yeah.
So, we want to at least sit down, how does the twentieth of November look?
I mean, that's too late. I think we should do it a little earlier.
The thirteenth?
It's deer season.
You know, how about end of October or something?
Could we do another day during the week? If you wanted to do it with the week of the thirteenth.
It doesn't have to be on a Monday night? Can we do it on a Wednesday?
Sure.
Say the fifteenth?
Whatever you want.
Tuesday at midnight, yes.
Accept them.
Fine.
How does November fifteenth, or is that getting a little too late?
Well, you know, sometimes we've gone three rounds with this.
Yeah.
And so, I, I always feel we're pressed.
Pete's right, Pete's right.
We've got two months, so why don't we look at October?
Well, that's the thing. We said we got two months and then we cram it all into November twenty-third.
That's what I'm saying, let's look at October.
Maybe we can hammer out the lion's share in October and, you know, and maybe, you know, finalize it in November, you know?
October eighteenth?
Yeah.
That's good.
Just wait.
Not great for me.
Okay, how about the?
I'm easy, I'm retired.
How about the seventeenth? Tuesday?
Tuesday, October seventeenth.
Thank you, Tammy.
Please pop me an email.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock, five o'clock?
Five o'clock is fine with me.
I like six o'clock.
Nine to seven.
Seven o'clock is fine.
Seven is alright too, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I do my budget cutting before breakfast. Couldn't stop myself, sorry.
Yes.
I'm still working till almost seven. Supplement my budget.
You said seven feet, huh?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Seven o'clock.
I like cutting budgets, it's fun.
Okay.
We've got patient people sitting here.
Yeah, okay, let's go.
There we go.
All right, you want to approve this?
We have to approve it.
Resolution?
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Lori, or Laura, Sue or Hookup? I believe that's who.
Nope, they're Jonathan Ambrose.
Oh, you're Ambrose, that's right. The other people aren't here. Okay, did everybody get a chance to take a look at that sewer hookup? That was among.
The sewer committee already looked at it and recommended approval of this.
We asked for a two-inch line, why did we go to?
No, we asked for a three.
Or a three, why did we go to an inch and a half?
What?
Wasn't it inch and a half?
It's a three.
Because.
It was smaller than we.
Yeah, 'cause Joe talked to Jerpies about it and they said it just did not make any sense to go to a bigger line. This is what they use up at the lakes and the cost would not benefit. The increase in cost would not justify the increase in.
I mean, you know, I look at an inch and a half, I just don't see through it.
They're the experts.
I don't do it.
Was that all plastic going in?
So, we just need your blessing.
I'm not happy with the one and a quarter.
This is a.
We asked for three. And it put, I moved.
Jerpies did not recommend that at all. I mean, we can wait, but she wants to get it done.
Yeah, I don't blame her.
And the prices are set, so if we switch it to three, we'd have to.
Her price would go up also.
Well, that plastic isn't that much, that's why you don't.
The only question I got, Pete, are you ever gonna sell that lot to build a house back there? To the south of you?
Well, I can't say never.
Then, ain't it better to go between the county and the, his line? So, you're not back in this situation again?
Well, would there be flow enough to go into Second Street? I mean, you would have to.
You have to use a pump anyways.
Why?
In the house.
Why don't we just talked about before? Why is it being brought up?
Because Lori's not on the water and sewer committee.
I wasn't informed about this.
Lori's streets and electric.
I'm just saying if Pete puts out, sells that lots and you need to hook up a thing, you're doing the same dumb thing. You know how I'm getting, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying. But she needs to get this worked on. And I don't know when that would ever happen or if it would happen.
I would make a motion to go ahead with this if, if it's recommended by the contractor and the homeowner wants to get moving with it.
Pete's carrying a pail.
I would go ahead, yeah.
Well, there's a motion made, is there a second?
Yeah.
A second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Ambrose, I'm sorry. You're next in line here. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at that? They basically want the work done and then put it on their, uh, as an assessment.
There's two things that go along with that. There's a resolution that needs to be approved by the council. It's to two, two thousand seventeen dash one-four. That's just to formally adopt the assessment procedure. And then, there is also an assessment agreement that needs to be signed by them. Essentially, they're waiving, because we're doing an assessment, they have a right to use public hearings, things like that. They also have a right to make, or the city to prove that the benefit to the property meets the amount of the assessment. They are waiving all that because this is essentially. They are waiving all that because this is essentially, the city is trying to help them out to allow them to make payments towards it.
And they were sent all this stuff last week, so.
So there are two, or is this tied into one? Is it just one resolution?
What the city council would need to pass is resolution two thousand seventeen dash one-four.
Let's take that first. Do I have a motion? Pass that.
So move.
Ask them if they have any comments.
I'm sorry, do we have any comments or concerns about it, questions?
They sat there so patiently.
Come on up, and I'm not even gonna hurl you through.
You take your time.
This is actually my daughter, and, um, both ownings are on the property.
Gotcha.
So, it's a joint venture, and, um, all I don't need, she can sit down.
I gave one for her.
Yeah, there's another chair.
Thanks. First off, I'd just like to thank the council for even considering coming in board and trying to help out the situation. It all started out with the, um, clogged sewer pipe, and then the, one of our neighborhood plumbers came in and broke the snake off in the drain. So that kind of left us open to see what broke the snake and to get it out. So, this is where we at here, um, as far as the discussion is concerned. And I really appreciate it, right now I have a beef in the yard, so I really appreciate it.
And it's getting cold.
And I also have a wife who is a cancer victim who needs to go to the bathroom three, four times a night, and I have to lift her to take her, so. As quick as possible, solving the situation would be well, thankful.
We'll get it done tonight. So, do you have any other comments?
No, actually, I mean, I spoke with the excavation people up in Lafayette, and they're due to come in on Thursday.
Nice.
And from what he explained to me, it's a one-day thing, so assuming that we come to an agreement here tonight, we should have everything done probably by the end of the week.
And you understand everything that's, that Don was talking about?
Yes, as far as it being in text and so on, yes.
Can you stop in then tomorrow sometime and sign, sign this, okay?
Let's vote.
Okay, we had a motion made and seconded, uh, so we did a discussion.
Who made, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Dale, and who seconded it?
Lyle.
Lyle?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, do we need something on the second agreement?
Yeah, if, if the council could approve the assessment agreement as proposed.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
I did.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Good luck.
Thanks. Enjoy your new toilets. Take really big baths. Thanks for that.
Thank you for, thank you for waiting.
Thanks for patience.
Park committee, come on up, guys.
You gotta have fun at the meeting, right? You gotta have fun at the meeting, right?
Ah, a little bit.
I know, Jim. Soon.
Look at that, she had to keep it zone.
Well, you know.
All right.
Well, there's not much to say, I don't think, they asked, the athletic boosters have raised about four thousand dollars?
We're estimated at forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Um, we wouldn't have a final on that until middle of next week, um, five hundred has been confirmed. Um, our booster meeting will be a week from tomorrow, at which point we will ask for formal approval of hopefully three thousand dollars, uh, from the boosters. And we're going to be approaching one other entity that is next week, Monday, um, to, and hopefully they, preliminary talks with them indicated they thought somewhere around a thousand bucks they could throw in, so. So, given that scenario, we'd be looking at about forty-five hundred coming from outside interests, so to speak, I guess you could say. Um, and then the school is gonna be, would be looking at kicking in, so.
One to two, I understood.
And then they asked if the city would be willing to kick in three if the total cost, you know, reaches-
Did, uh, Rick give you that information on the scoreboard?
Um, that day I was there, we met with you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause he was gonna talk about some of the installation and training.
And we've discussed a little bit of that as of right now, um, we're probably leaning towards Daktronics purchasing the scoreboard, installing the scoreboard. Only thing we would have to do is get the power to the scoreboard, they would do everything else, they would pour the concrete, set the, the I-beams, and that's included on the price, on the bid, um.
Okay, and we did find power in front of the T-ball field, there's one-ten power, so we would get it from there.
And Oscar had showed me that the other day.
Okay.
So, yeah, and that's kind of where we're going, um, the city, then the school would basically sign a ninety-nine-year contract and pay for it upfront, because the school can't purchase a scoreboard and put it on city property. So, the city would purchase that scoreboard, we would sign the contract and pay an upfront payment, um, for a lease or a maintenance agreement for the field for ninety-nine years, or whatever we decide. Yeah. That, that funny stuff.
So the city would own the, the-
It would be ours.
Yep.
And repairs have to be done, would be the city's-
Correct.
City's expenses, is there a warranty on it right now?
Uh, there would be a warranty, I think it's one year.
Uh, five-year parts warranty on scoreboards, one-year parts warranty on RC one hundred handheld console.
And when did you want to get it installed?
This fall, hopefully.
We were trying to get it this fall, because in the spring, that part of the park is way too wet.
Yep.
What we're hoping for, get it in this fall, get everything finalized, um, there'll be an, an interesting aspect to this, Jenny will have control of the controller.
She's a control freak, so.
Well, they say it can work up to like five hundred feet away, so.
They get Gordy to work, so.
Ouch. Wow, that, that was kind of nasty there, Gordy. This, this kind of came up about, this came up about six years ago, and it kind of got dropped and nothing ever went anywhere. And we're just circling back to it and making the push, we have some, the funds available that we could contribute from boosters, and we just want to push to make sure that it gets done. Um, and that's why we're revisiting it now, and through the course of, uh, exploration, I guess you could say, we're the only school in the conference that does not have a scoreboard on the field they play on. So, that's why we're pushing for it.
Softball field, and Brian does a great job.
Well, and I was actually gonna add, Oscar, Oscar is, I don't want to say, every time I call, he jumps, I mean, and, and I've called with some crap, I've, I've called in some crappy conditions. And I said, hey, Oscar, can you drag that field? I know it rained for twelve hours, can you try to get, and he, he goes down there, he, he does his best, he works with me, we're renovating the field right now, the, the grass lip. Um, Jenny bought a bunch of sod, I bought some sod, we got it all down, Oscar makes sure it's watered every day, he's got everything seeded, it's coming in real well.
We got water there now too, so it's just nice.
All right.
But they asked if the city would be willing to contribute three thousand towards this, so when the park committee met, they agreed that we could contribute three thousand dollars out of our park maintenance reserves, that we had funds in there that we could use for that, so.
Do you need a motion on that, or can it just be done?
So what if the other money don't come in?
Well, they already have it.
They already have it.
Well, I mean, you know, he said tentatively.
If you want to make a contingent on the other money showing up, that's fine, at least we can go forward and say, this money's been put up by the city as long as we come through with our portion.
Our tax is three thousand, period, the rest is yours, no matter what, but we're paying it all upfront.
Right, and then they'll pay us back.
And we're paying you back to-
And because of that, there should be a motion, just because we're purchasing upfront, and then I'll do it in agreement for later.
And the total cost is what, ten?
Uh, they thought they could knock some off on the installation too, so. Well, the-
The total cost-
The total cost on the scoreboard that we're looking at, which is basically this, except not in green, obviously, this is just the example, um, is the, the scoreboard itself is three thousand six oh three, according to this. Uh, that includes a wireless radio receiver attached to it, so we can use the wireless controllers.
So we won't have to put any more wires in the ground?
Right, and installation and training, um, is five thousand two hundred and fifty on top of that, so you're looking at about eighty-eight fifty-three. And then if we put a sponsor panel on it, that's another six hundred and thirty bucks, so you're somewhere between eighty-eight and ten, to be safe, so.
Who gets the naming rights?
Well, whoever buys, whoever buys the panel.
Whoever pays for the panel.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, you go ahead, and, uh, I'll take that money, I'll approve that.
Move three thousand dollars from the park reserves to be allocated toward that.
Can we have as part of the motion that you're just agreeing to pay it all upfront?
And then get reimbursed.
Yes, that's my motion.
That's motion I'll second.
Seconded, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
If you put it on a swivel, we could turn around and use it as a hockey arena. Hockey arena?
Who likes hockey?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so up the north end walking path, you got that out there?
Yes, we also discussed that walking path that we had discussed about a year ago, that goes through the north side of the park, between the ball fields, around, and to the shelter that your son's Eagle Skull project.
Okay.
Say, Jenny?
Yeah?
Do you have the minutes when we added that second field?
Well, I'm sure I do.
With Brian, that, at that time, they were gonna pay for some things.
Who? The school?
The softball, yeah, the school was, yeah.
I can probably, when they put that practice field in?
That's right, they were gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I can probably dig that out.
Yeah.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
All right, let's get back to the sidewalks, north end walking path.
Um, yeah, so we talked about doing that along, about a year ago, um, Oscar got a price from Nissen recently, twelve to thirteen thousand, um, dollars. We have forty-eight thousand in reserves in walking path money. Um, and I did get a call from the historical society wondering if we were still gonna do it, because they would like to donate a bench to put along a path. And the park committee thought that would be a good idea to have a walking path on the north side of the park, we don't currently have anything on that side.
So where's it gonna run, from that shed down to the west?
From the current walking path, between the ball fields, and then around to that little shelter on Eighth Street.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, they-
We need a motion on that, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. I think that's a good idea, there is no access to the north end of the park, and we have a lot of people going back and forth.
And it's wet.
Vehicles, yeah.
And it's wet.
All right, sidewalk replacements, Kevin?
Um, yeah, the resolution that's, I, you had laying on your spot tonight as part of this, that we also discussed at the park committee meeting, sidewalk replacement. Um, the park committee thought it would be a good idea to encourage people to maybe replace their sidewalks if the city would be willing to pay for half of the cost of the sidewalks and let, allow them to assess their portion, their fifty percent of the sidewalks, to their taxes as an assessment. Um, we also did discuss some of the sidewalks in town that need to be replaced. This discussion will probably also be part of the comp plan update that happens next year, but we just kind of threw around some ideas, and we looked, revisited the sidewalk assessment that we had INS do, and, you know, we'll see what happens. We thought also maybe as, to show good faith, we could replace our sidewalk in front of city hall here, and then offer, you know, Miranda to fix hers, and maybe do this whole block yet this year, and let her assess half if she's interested in doing that. And, you know, not saying you need to fix your sidewalk when ours are bad also, so.
Does the, oh, homeowner have the right to choose whom they want to redo the?
They would have, they could choose who they want, but it would have to be to our specifications in order to have it assessed, so.
Yeah, the biggest cost on a sidewalk is actually the, the labor, it's not the materials.
But anyway, the resolution or the ordinance in your packet would, if you so choose, could have a first reading tonight.
And how is it decided?
It would be, the city would pay for fifty percent?
No, no, that, that I understand, who decides, who's, who comes and says you need a new sidewalk?
We haven't gotten to that point yet, yeah, but this is just, if somebody wants to replace their sidewalk, this would give them- Yeah, voluntarily, this would give them an incentive to, to do so. We're hoping through the comp plan update and, and working with, trying to improve our sidewalks in town, we can come up with some kind of a plan to address sidewalks in town. So I guess, we, there's twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget we put in, which you guys adopted, which we can certainly cut out, depend, you know, at the work session. Um, but the action, I guess, for this would be to have a first reading of that ordinance.
The thing that I took away from that me, committee meeting was when we looked at the, some of the sidewalks that needed work, you know, I had no idea how much it would cost to replace a sidewalk on an average residential property, and most of them, the cost to the homeowner paying fifty percent was, what?
Under a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was under a thousand, and for a lot of-
Under a thousand dollars.
For, for a fif, for a fifty-foot lot, it's two hundred and seventy-five bucks in concrete. Concrete's cheap.
I know, yeah, you know, when I think we paid nine thousand, or they did, with the nine thousand for that piece up there, I thought, well, hmm, so your twenty-five won't go over your fire if you're-
Right.
Probably cover your street down.
No, but if-
Library.
It's something, it's something.
I had another idea too, so.
I mean, this is city hall.
It should.
Look at Rome.
So, do we want to have that first reading tonight?
Right.
That's a motion?
Yep.
Yes, there's a second, or a tie for second. Uh, who's got the second?
I do.
Okay, Julie has the second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Now, we're gonna proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Nuisance notice.
I can take that.
Oh, did I skip something?
You have a notice, our meeting got fun again.
No, there's no.
Okay, do we need anything with the nuisance, do we just need to, um?
Yeah, if I could-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, there's two nuisance orders in front of the council tonight, and one is for five-one-four North Carver, and one is for three oh seven North Hennepin Street. We have dealt with these properties in the past, uh, as you can see in the packets, uh, this summer, the police department has been talking with these property owners, trying to get, basically, it's junkyard situations, we've been trying to work with them to get it cleaned up. It hasn't worked, uh, we did try first the administrative citation, uh, those weren't responded to, uh, so, the, the next option is I could either charge them and go into criminal court. The thing that I don't like about that is it doesn't address the situation, I like the option where the council can order that they do it. Uh, here, if you issued the order tonight, they would have until September fifteenth to clean up the property. If they don't, then the city is authorized to go on the property, clean it up, and then they get billed for the cost, if they don't get, pay the cost, it goes on their taxes. I like this option, because it actually addresses the problem.
Any questions?
No, I think we gotta move.
Yeah.
Is there any more that you want to add to that?
I just, if the council wanted to adopt the orders, there should be a motion separately for each order.
I'll entertain a motion for the first notice, panel.
So move that.
Motion made.
Second.
The second by Julie, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. I entertain a motion for, um, a nuisance notice for Jake Breach.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded by Dale, uh, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
The meeting got not fun.
September-
Continue with Clean Energy Choice Program.
September sixteenth open.
I hate that, I hate them to do that.
Six hundred and sixteenth open.
You know, it's funny, you have to do it, but it's eight of them to do it.
Let's try them.
'Cause that's the date, you have to go clean it up.
Make a people do that, I just hate them.
I, I-
Make them out there work with it.
Yeah, I just-
Yeah.
You weren't listening, were you?
It's one of the things I really don't enjoy.
Senators deserve.
Tell them to keep the sixteenth open.
Okay, continue with Clean Energy Choice Program.
The legislature passed some law that says cities under fifteen hundred, or, yeah, they don't have-
Some law.
Yeah. That cities under, I think it's 1,500, don't have to participate in the Clean Energy Choice Program, which offers rebates to people who buy appliances and everything. And I was contacted by the MMPA and they would like all their member cities to continue to be a part of it. I think the citizens like getting rebates for their appliances and...
Is there any reason we would want to drop it?
No. I don't... I don't... You're the council.
We need a motion to stay above or do...
Pardon?
Can we just... Do we need a motion?
I...
I'll make a motion. We continue with the Clean Energy Program.
All right, we'll second that.
It would be proactive to just do it.
Motion and second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. City Administrator.
All right. Uh, we had an open house for residents on Eighth Street Monday night. We had a good turnout, I thought. Um, we answered a lot of questions. Uh, Brian was there, Bill was there, Gordy, Mayor Pearson, and Lyle was there for a little bit. I think everyone wasn't happy when they left, but I think they understood the situation better. Um, they're doing soil borings for the 2019 construction project on First Street, so that is moving ahead. I submitted the Houston Galveston paperwork for the fire department truck and I did get a confirmation back today that that's been... They received it.
Good.
I received a bid for the new central air units on City Hall Police Garage. I sent them off for approval. I still have not heard from the adjuster, so I'm going to have to call him. Uh, what else? I attended the MMUA conference, August 21st through 23rd. There were updates from both the state and federal governments. I registered for the police maker track and I have a big binder about policies that Kelly would love. I would save it for you, yeah. Uh, I tried to... I tried to get ahold of EPA Audio to find out when to get our estimate. I did get it at five to five tonight and I didn't really get a chance to look at it yet.